I was waiting till you walked in. It's always these days.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, May 22nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Will you all turn the oil smacks on for it?
May I have a roll call, please?
Jeff here.
Darryl here.
Lynn here.
Amanda here.
Rise.
The legislative events of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one law, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And we have Eric on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight, has everybody read the regular agenda?
Yes.
Yep.
Are there any additions or corrections or changes, Madison? May I have a vote?
I move that way, except the minutes as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Darryl, second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes on May 8th. Does anybody have any editing on it?
I actually had one correction. Within the note section of the adjournment, it should have said Jeff A. was excused out to instead of Eric R. is attending and assesses an alternate. That was an error from me prepping the minutes beforehand and things not quite working out.
So he wasn't just a notion?
He was not just a notion.
With that, with Madison's edit, may I have a motion, please, to accept the meaning minutes of May 8th?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of May 8, 2024.
Okay. Motion by Amanda, second by Darryl.
Someplace.
You two were juggling, so I just picked and chose.
It works.
All in favor?
Aye.
Declaration of conflicts of interest regarding anything on tonight's agenda?
No.
Nope.
And I have one. Eric?
Eric, no.
Okay. Public comment, is there anybody in the audience that has anything to say about something that is not on tonight's agenda? And all the chairs say no.
There's no raised hands on Zoom.
And nobody on Zoom. Special presentations, we have none. Design review and land use public hearings, 1010 Two Elk Lane, new single-family home, Madison?
Yes.
Hi, Scott.
Hello.
So this is fairly straightforward. The applicant requests final plan review of a new three-bedroom, 4,200 roughly square foot, single-family residence at 1010 Two Elk within the Cross Creek mixed-use zone district. As a slight aside note, if you'll notice on the zoning map within the staff report, the section of where this little development sits is white. So that typically means that it's not zoned, as we experienced with the cemetery. However, after researching previous staff reports for the different duplexes that were out there, those staff reports termed this as mixed use, so I've just continued that zoning for this development. Plans show a one-story with a basement, three-bedroom structure with a maximum building height of around 18 feet, which is well under the 20-foot allowed limit. Parking is fine with two off-street spaces provided in the garage. The basement space has the three bedrooms, while the main level has the primary living area. It's a pretty simple design, and with the materials that are proposed to be used, feel that like that is complementary to adjacent residential structures and character on nearby parcels. Staff further suggests that the scale is appropriate and will not overpower surrounding natural and built environments. One point of issue is that the plans do not show exterior light locations and no spec sheets were provided for proposed exterior lighting. So plans submitted for building permits should include exterior lighting locations on floor plans, building elevations, and if applicable, reflected ceiling roof plan, which I would like to say we did get the interior lighting plan today. A final spec sheet for all exterior fixtures should be submitted for review prior to or concurrent with the building permit application to demonstrate that all exterior lighting will be full cutoff dark sky compliant per the Minter municipal code. And so staff is recommending approval of the plans with the condition of the exterior lighting. And so the builder and the owner are here, as well as I believe several members of their team online. Should you have any questions?
Okay. As the builder, would you like to step up and say anything? Please say your name and address first.
Hello, my name is Fletcher Groff. I live at 1036 Polar Star Drive in Eagle, Colorado. Just want to thank you for this opportunity tonight to come to the amazing town of Minter. I spend the majority of my life in this valley. Absolutely love Minter, and I think this project is a great one that continues the character and, you know, the continued development of Eagle as it continues to grow. I'm always here for you guys if you ever need anything, have any questions, understanding the valley really well, that if you ever need anything, just please note we're always here to support you guys and support the town and make sure we do our proper process in the building process and be a good community member.
Thank you. Let's start with Amanda.
I think the only question I had is that the schematics look like there's the fence. Is that fence already in place? Okay, that was the only. Yeah, the next one, next is the master, that's not a new, okay.
I think it's actually, I think Steam Master actually installed it.
Okay, that was my only question.
And I have one that I asked Madison.
Is that not true?
It's on ours.
It's on yours.
Yeah, but I mean with Steam Masters.
You can put it together.
Okay. But it's not a defense.
No, it's been there for a few years.
Oh, thanks.
I had one question, but I asked Madison, and it related to the note she had that said three bedrooms, and on the application it says two. And would you mind explaining that to them, please?
Yeah, sure, so it's two bedrooms plus a bunk room, which I count as a third bedroom, given that beds were shown on the plans. So it looked like two beds, I assume for the kids.
Is there a closet off that bunker? I don't remember.
I wasn't looking for closets, but I can look.
Because it's not the definition, like, or does it?
Closets don't matter.
Okay, thanks.
And you have four parking spaces, I assume that's the two in the garage and two out in front of it.
I think it's just the two in the garage.
On page 19, it says onsite parking spaces, four.
Then yes, two in the garage and two in the front.
Is that correct?
Looking at the plans.
Yeah.
I think that's how I interpreted it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's the pole in for the garage.
So that would do the two of them. Those were mine.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of questions. I know, living in the area, the water table is fairly high underground. Soil tests, did they show anything about water? Being a basement, I was just wondering.
Yes, they did. We're have a wonderful, large team of consultants on board to address the waterproofing and build it correctly.
Okay, okay. The other thing is the garages, the storage. Is there any space for storage? I noticed the picture shows a boat, snowmobiles and cars, but is there a storage area as well? A lot of times people turn their garages into storage units. I was just wondering. There's, Chris or Kevin, feel free to jump on.
That's not, yeah, my name is Chris Davis with Boss Architecture. The intent isn't for the garage to serve, you know, specifically as a storage room other than the store, toys, things like snowmobiles, bikes, kayaks, you know, automobiles, things like that.
Well, what I'm wondering about is like, as the vehicles pull in, is there enough room in front that there could be storage units in front of the vehicles? Or are they going to be right up against the wall?
The length of it.
There should be enough room for circulation around automobiles, and we tried to design storage assemblies on walls for things like skis and snowboards and, you know, outdoors equipment. So we try to give ourselves enough space for a little bit of storage, circulation, and then a comfortable depth of an automobile.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
I like the design. I live down in that end of town as well, and I've watched the duplex, you know, go up. And I don't know if you built the duplexes or not, but it looks very complimentary. I like that it's a ranch, not a two-story, so I think it'll be a little more minimal down there than the duplexes are. But I, and I like it overall, and there really, there hasn't been much action. Like, I've never really seen too many people using those duplexes at the same time, it's pretty quiet, so.
I did want to clarify, sorry, I didn't realize I could just speak up, but there are actually four parking spaces inside the garage itself.
Oh, thank you.
Sure.
So there seems to be adequate. Is this a primary residence or a secondary residence?
That was my question.
Secondary.
At least today.
At least today. And then I'm assuming like if you guys are thinking in the future of VRVOing it or something, then obviously we have town ordinances that deal with getting licensing for that. And I don't even know where we're at on if we're maxed on VRVOs. But I think, I think the current.
The lady sitting to my left will be able to explain that to you.
Well, I know it doesn't really apply to this application per se, I'm just kind of putting it out there that we do have ordinances for it. So I don't really have any problems with it, I like the design. And other than the wildlife in our area, there's a lot of moose down there and bears. So we have been having more and more problems with bear containers and trash. So as long as there's room for the trash to stay inside, I would recommend that.
Highly. Scott, do you have anything?
I do not. Eric?
Eric?
I was just, I mean, I was also asking if it was going to be a primary residence or a second home, but also that it's a mixed use, so like in the future, there could be more commercial property over there, if the owner's aware of that and stuff, and knowing that the zoning laws and what's, what could be there in the future.
There's only one other lot available, right?
I think so. Those were all planned as duplex development lots. So it's actually kind of unique that this is a single-family. But it doesn't require that they be duplex. That was the original development for Cross Creek. Yeah, the max was six units, I think.
Anybody else? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I need a public comment, too.
Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. Empty rooms make me forget that.
Okay, I have no raised hands on Zoom.
But there are people on Zoom.
There's one person on Zoom.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Now, may I have a motion? You can make the motion.
Me? I don't have the actual address.
I know, it's 1010 Two Elk.
1010 Two Elk? I'd like to make a motion to approve 1010 Two Elk final plan with the conditions as listed in the packet regarding, I believe, the lighting, right? And other than that, there's no other conditions.
Oh, second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Darryl. Is there any other further conversation? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Amanda, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Darryl, aye.
Jeff, aye. Eric?
I need to ask.
Eric, aye. Yeah, am I voting today, or?
You are, yes.
Okay. Eric, aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I was going to ask Mr. Groff. Mr. Groff, your dad's name.
Neil.
I did do work for him years ago. I knew the name sounded familiar. I don't even remember what I did, but I had to ask. He, somewhere, I used to do a lot of landscape maintenance, Christmas decorating and fresh flowers and stuff. I think it was back when I first started with the landscape maintenance area.
Five light bulbs?
I don't remember. I hate to say that, but the name was very familiar.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
What is the, I apologize, the lighting midnight?
Dark sky. It has to point down. No floodlights, you don't, you should not be able to see the bulb per se, it should point down.
And there are a lot of light manufacturers, they all, you know, they're marked them as dark sky compliant. I mean, every, every community that has a DRB, everything is dark sky compliant in the valley now.
So when you have a bulb kind of hanging down, the light fixture, like here's the end of the bulb, the light fixture should come here or below the bulb so that it directs it only downwards, not outwards.
So it's washing walls with light or maybe back into softens, but not in your eyes?
Not showing up through trees and bushes or?
Yeah, I mean, they've just proven that it disrupts bird migrations and patterns. It's really for wildlife, and then for us to see the stars.
We're not exactly dark sky, we'd like it, but that helps with the dark skies.
And just so you're aware, this application.
Where?
Here.
Where?
This application is going to Council on Consent Agenda on June 5th. It is perfectly within the grounds of writing to call it up if they have any questions.
Well, it's got better.
I hope you hear that. Light which would give the adjacent property in her letter. But if you didn't, then that will, you not necessarily have to attend if Counsel is, doesn't call it up.
Hey, Madison, can everyone be quiet so they can hear you speak? That'd be great.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
So when it's on consent, typically they just make a motion to approve the consent agenda, they don't talk about anything on it. However, as I said, it's perfectly within their right to call it up if they have any questions or want to make specific comments on it. And so you don't have to be there in the hearing room, but I would advise somebody attending via Zoom, just in case they do. It's within the first, like, five minutes of the meeting, so you really shouldn't have to be there very long. Just, just in case they do have questions and they do decide to call it up. Okay?
Thank you.
Of course. Okay, okay, okay.
Well, thank you, everyone, very much appreciated.
Of course.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Next.
Next.
Do you have it? No, I have it, you borrowed it, but I have it. Planning Commission comments?
Staff reports.
No Planning Commission comments. Oh, staff reports, staff reports, it's in there.
Yes, it is in there, there's a couple of things I would like to add to it.
Please, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Happy building.
So there's a couple of things that we'd like to add as kind of a discussion slash staff report direction kind of thing. I'll take the first one, and Scott will take the second one. So the first one is that we got a minor DRB application for a change in color on one of the houses up in Taylor. However, we don't regulate color, and I believe the only reason they submitted that to us is that they're halfway through building it. And so it is staff's opinion that since we don't regulate color, that they shouldn't need to have any kind of changes to approve plans, go through the whole process. But since y'all did approve the color that was on the project, we just wanted to make sure that y'all were comfortable with us saying, no, you're good, because we don't regulate color. The materials aren't changing.
And we don't regulate color, I guess my only concern would be, is it similar to something they had? How's it like from white to orange?
They're going from a cream-yellow color to a dark gray.
Oh, yeah.
Not bright purple.
No, just I want to start discussion up on. Okay, no problem. Now it's staff, it's Scott's turn.
Okay. I have a couple of things. The first is responding to a request by Amanda. Sorry that took so long to circle back to this, Amanda, but you had sent an email about a month ago asking questions about when we get the Eagle County School District subdivision application in front of Planning Commission. What does that look like, and how does that relate to the 2011 annexation agreement? So I believe Madison has passed out that 2011 annexation, the ordinance that established zoning for Malloy Park. So hopefully that's helpful, and I think if you wanted to, if you had specific questions or concerns about the annexation as it occurred in 2011 or the existing zoning, we can certainly have a discussion about that, and if we need to have Mike attend. But, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, and what resulted from that ordinance in 2011 was the codification of the zone districts that show up in the Malloy Park area, the development standards and the dimensional limitations, all of which are in our code today. So as a follow-up or additional to that question, I think there was a question about if that's already been annexed and certain things were reviewed when those zone districts were established. And we are going to be reviewing at some point with the Planning Commission in the next couple of months, this subdivision request by the school district. When do we get to look at impact reports? And I can tell you that the application that we have on our desk that is working its way through completeness review does have reports on wildlife impacts, soils, geotech, vegetation, wildfire, all those types of things. So we have that information, and it will be reviewed as part of your review when you get your hands on it.
Cool, I will still put, and this is my, I've just been swamped with work, Scott, so thank you for your update. I just, I still have a lot of questions more around the traffic impacts. So I will still put that, those in writing so that then you guys can have the time to source it, you know, like look at it, the questions, and see if it covers, you know, it's already covered in the impact studies, and also so the other team members can take a look at the questions. And I, I know I committed to that last week, I just haven't had a chance.
That's fine. If you could send me and/or Madison your questions, we will disseminate those so we don't have a multi-person email chain with the Planning Commission. But thank you for that heads up. Any questions on the Malloy Park or that annexation or the zoning or anything like that? Yeah, I mean, just Scott, to dovetail off of Amanda's request, I'm assuming that there is a C dot traffic study? We do not have a C dot traffic study with this development. Is it not required?
Nope.
You know, I'll look at the code, and I have a feeling if it was required, Mike and/or Jeff Spinell would have already asked for it. But let me get with them and double-check the code.
It's actually specifically in here that says the traffic is sufficient and no traffic impacts have to be done.
I mean, it's surprising with the numbers of of trips, let's just say, going in and out of there in relation to some of the other PUDs that have been reviewed and are maybe coming in review that, I mean, even Belden Place had a C dot traffic study for 40 units, and this is three times that size. So why, and I know just from, and I'm sure Eric can speak to this as well, because he goes up there and drives that road every day to school, but I know that that road, you know, is it's pretty tight, and it's, it's dangerous enough that I don't let my daughter ride her bike to school with. And I know that they did put in a D cell lane when they built the bridge or redid the bridge a few years ago. Maybe that covered it, but I just, I guess, to Amanda's point, are they exempt from some things because they are the school district and they don't need to do those things? Or was that something that was granted immunity from, let's, for lack of a better word, by the annexation agreement, that they were grandfathered out of that because of some deal the town made? It's very possible that that was the deal, right? So I'm happy to go back and look at this again and talk with Mike Sawyer and see if that was. Amanda, you think it's express in this?
Yeah, so set, so page nine, the bottom of page nine, number C, they, so the way that, now, these are my questions for Mike, is that like, one, we expressly can'ts that we agree that the current road is sufficient for the subdivision, the major subdivision or development. So we expressly agree to the, and you can look it up, say, look up the word sufficient in the annexation, and it'll say sufficient, the word is sufficient. And then they have a clause in there that says, if we determine it's not sufficient, then it's on the town of Minter to then make the additional access required that we're going to require through the act, the town's access road, which is that road up to the water tower. So all of that language is specifically in the annexation agreement. And then lastly, the other piece, my biggest question was that there's language in the annexation agreement that says upon development that we then own maintenance on that road. And so my question was, what, what's the trigger for development? Is it just the site work, or is it like them going up? Like what actually is considered development? Because as soon as development starts, we own maintaining that road going forward, Minter.
That's going to be tough.
Right now, and for the past bunch of years, the school district has been in charge of plowing that road and maintaining that road, and it's been pretty frankly poor.
Really poor.
I think I get in the cart above, ahead of the horse, talking about this application right now, so. I think we should probably, if you guys have specific questions about the annexation agreement, and we need to either have Mike join us for a quick conversation at the next meeting or something like that, we should do that. Scott, are we, are we allowed? I know town council can go and have executive sessions and talk about things. I don't know that we're allowed to do anything like that, are we not? Yeah, and even the town council isn't really allowed to do that anymore. There was some recent legislation or court cases at the state level which sent a shock through both municipal attorney's offices where it's, it's not really safe grounds to have executive sessions anymore. Right? So. That's the way this town's worked for a long time. Yeah. So not only does council have, I don't even know if they're doing executive sessions anymore as a matter of practice, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't plan it on the Planning Commission level. Okay. Well, I think we should just curb our conversation about this for now, but.
Eric? Eric?
Could I have, yeah, yes?
Do you have, you didn't get a copy of this, but I'm sure if you'd like to drop by the town office, Madison?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, she'll have one for you.
You can email it to her.
Are there any other questions you have?
Recently and something you've sent.
I'd like to look at the annexation report. I don't know, when it comes to conflict of interest, like where does that, where do I go from there when it cuts into Malloy Park?
Again, I think that's probably a good conversation to have with the town attorney.
Okay.
Typically, if you stand to gain financially from a proposed development, that is a clear conflict of interest, and you should recuse yourself.
Okay.
However, if there is not that bright line, but yet you have to at least disclose that you're an employee of the school district, but you feel that you can, you know, maintain objectivity and review this objectively, that's usually kind of the litmus test, and we would handle that as this is being presented to the Planning Commission. That's the time that you would either recuse yourself or disclose, disclose anything like that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure. I have one other thing, and this is germane to a conversation that Michelle had with Madison today, so jump any, in any time, Madison. But Michelle, as she often does, spends too little time sleeping at night and too much time thinking about all the things that she had to think about as the town manager. And one of them always is staff bandwidth and kind of looking ahead to what we have coming down the pike. This summer is shaping up to be a really busy summer. We have our first, was it three or four DRB applications for homes in Minter North that we'll be bringing forth here in the next couple of meetings. Those are being reviewed right now, and we're waiting for a resubmital from the applicant. In the meantime, we've received our second batch of homes in Minter North. So all, each one of those requires individual staff review of each one of these home designs, and it'll start filling up your agendas here going forward. We also anticipate Belden. We also anticipate Belden at some point coming back through DRB for design of those residential units. So we've got a lot coming down the pike on top of chapter 16, Midtown Village, PUD, Malloy Park. And I guess Michelle's concern is that there's enough bandwidth at the planning commission level as well as far as, you know, the amount of meeting time. So one thing that she wanted us to ask you to consider is if the planning commission would want to meet at 5:30 start time instead of 6:30, just to give ourselves more time on these agendas to get through what, what should be a lot of work. You don't have to answer that tonight, but if it's worth some discussion, I think that was, that was her request. And one of her ideas on how we can help manage, you know, both at the staff level and for your sake, what we've got coming down the pike.
Okay.
I think. I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine too.
Amanda's fine. Eric?
I'm fine with that.
And I'm retired now, so I'm fine with it.
If you didn't bring that up, we were.
I wish I was retired, but I'm good with it.
Everybody says yes, Scott.
That's wonderful. We really appreciate it. Madison, what do we need to do to make that happen? We just need to change the website and make sure our agendas now say 5:30. We probably put something in the newsletter.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we'll need to do anything like super official, but yeah, agenda, some kind of e-blast, letting everybody know, hey, planning commissions are now starting at 5:30. Be there, be square. And, um.
It'll be a four course meal.
Follow one.
We can talk to Michelle. This is the negotiation period, Jeff.
You know, give and take.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Madison, is that all we had tonight?
I think so.
Okay.
So can I go back through this list? There'll be the first batch of DRB from Mintern North, the second batch of DRB from Mintern North, possibly Belden, chapter 16, Midtown. And was there one more thing?
Malloy Park.
Malloy Park.
How many houses have they submitted from Mintern North?
Seven so far.
Seven?
The first three, we've already reviewed and sent comments back to them, awaiting for them to resubmit. And then the second batch of four, we got yesterday.
They're all consistent homes though, so consistently.
Fairly. I mean, everyone requires their own individual review of especially.
Nobody's coming in with purple.
Unfortunately not. But that is a comment on all of theirs that, hey, council said that you should consider a broader color palette. So hopefully they will come in with some more fun colors.
Don't hold your breath.
I won't.
Does the application show if they're primary or secondary homes?
Nope.
Tell them.
No.
That's not something we factor.
Take a guess. Yeah.
Anything else on the, from Scott?
Not for me, no.
Okay. With that, now, is there any planning commission comments?
I have a comment.
Go for it.
I don't know who'd even, I, it's like, because we don't see how C dot's doing all of their, like, their approvals for the traffic work that they're doing. Did that come through this town, like staff for all of the building of the, the road maintenance that's happening in town?
No, that's outside of town limits.
Oh, my gosh. I'm just saying.
I'm, I'm assuming you mean up by the bridge.
Yeah, I'm just assuming that, and this way to, and the rock side. Right now, if there is a wildfire, we can't get out. And I'm, I'm totally serious. They have the on-ramp. It's fully blocked with all of that.
Okay.
You can't get into, like, Vale is a total train wreck. Even if you go past the one that's like, they're doing stops because they're pulling down the retaining wall.
Yeah.
And then you have Walmart and then you have, past Walmart, you have, you can't even get up to like the highway almost at Walmart.
Right.
And then this way, we have rock mitigation towards Red Cliff. Like, I don't, I'm, I'm just wondering how all of that got approved by C dot at the same time
Yeah.
in wildfire season. And they're all going through August.
And it's worse. I went to Buena Vista, or to Leadville, I'm sorry, a week ago. And from the bottom of the S-turn, they're changing the barriers, the metal pieces. Then you get to the rock wall, which they're putting chain link up on. Then you get to an area where they're putting black drainage pipes from the top and running it down under the road. And there was one. To get to Leadville from Mintern, it took me an hour and 15 minutes last week with the stops. They were all 15, 20 minute stops. So yeah, that is something to.
I mean, there's just no exit for Mintern if there's a wildfire. And I know that it's going to be closed until August. And so, and Walmart is going to be under construction through the, it's like through the fall.
You, you know what I'll do? I'm on the fire district board and I'll ask the chief if they have something planned.
Yeah, ask because you couldn't even move the.
I will pass the information on to you, whatever the chief says.
Okay.
Or have him contact you guys.
Sure.
That might be the better bet.
I think in an emergency, just between us, if you had to get on the exit.
You can't now because it's covered in dirt. They've taken all that retaining wall and there's huge mounds. You can't even but like go around a.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
You can't get on.
There's concrete barrier up there.
There's concrete barrier and they've dumped all the retaining wall material down at the bottom.
So going west.
West. Can't, there's, you cannot physically get on. Can't get around the dirt.
Would you go to Vale? You still could go to Vale.
But that's gonna always be blocked because they only have one exit point. And so their mitigation to get out of Vale is that, and it's only supposed to be used for Vale residents get out. Like, it's, it's a cluster. There is no plan.
Thank you, Amanda.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Just so y'all are happy.
If, you know.
In other words, no outside fires. Keep your barbecue grills closed.
Well, I mean, look what happened in, look what happened in Maui, right? If, if, if we, if there was something, don't hesitate. Get out of town, go west, get to the river. Go down Highway six, don't wait.
Yeah.
That's all we have.
And maybe that is, I mean, it's a big stretch, but maybe no outdoor fires in your yards for a month or so. If we could put a moratorium on it. It's gonna be hard, but it might be a safety measure if they talk about it.
Right, that kind of thing totally comes from the Forest Service down the town, so I don't know.
Maybe the fire chiefs.
Yeah, let's ask the fire chief.
Comes from the fire marshal or the sheriff.
Yeah.
And C dot and the county are the ones that coordinate all the plans for construction and access and all that stuff, so.
Well, and the one next, the house next to me currently hasn't been doing it but a year and a half ago or two summers ago. The person who lived back there had live fires without, in the dirt with no coverage, no protection at the base of the hillside back here, right at the very back of the lot. That was really scary. I mean, sparks were flying all over the place. So, I mean, it's something to look into.
We could also ask Eric Lovegren from Eagle Wild and Fires if, just how aware they are of the impact of the road construction on evacuation routes and.
Yeah, where are they? Have they like looked at it?
I know Michelle's been on evacu, you know, the evacuation plan for the town for a couple of years now. It's been high on her list. So it's one of those other things she doesn't sleep at night.
It's totally different plan when you have every single.
Yes. We'll swim out.
If we have to.
Anybody else have any council comments? I have no others.
Just the, the concert series is gonna start. There's gonna be eight shows. And I think they start last week of June. And they will, they will go for eight weeks. They're gonna stop in mid-August because schools start so early. So they won't go till the end of August. And they're still gonna be on Thursday nights. And we do have a conflict with, I think the town of Vale is doing a Thursday night free concert series now and also Beaver Creek is doing a free concert series on Thursday nights with a lot bigger budget than we have. So maybe that's good. It'll keep it a little more local, but we're gonna have some competition.
Well, people might come here also because we're smaller. We're not as big a crowd.
No, I just know for a fact that the town of Vale's budget for their concerts is six figures plus. I think it's 500,000.
Eric, do you have any comments? Commission comments?
No, I'm good. I'm just listening. A lot of good talk about fires. Yeah, just living out here in Malloy with the fire and stuff like too. We only have one road in and one road out of the school. I always wonder about what happens if there's a fire in between us and the highway, but that could be brought up later.
No, but it's a good thing you said it now.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's one, we really have that one road in. If there is a fire, there's nowhere we can go. I mean, we'd have to run across the river to the road over by the water plant. The whole, so I think that's something that needs to be considered or talked about also at some point.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else? Future meetings, June 12th and June 26th. Since we're talking about being very busy this summer, can everybody try to be there?
Yes.
Or at least by Zoom?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, with that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting on May 22nd, 2024.
Motion by Amanda, second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.